Everyone. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for the first of October, P24. I'd like to remind you all to silence your cellphones if you have not already. If you'd like to address the board during public comment, please add your name to the sheet in the back, by the entrance, and Erica will bring that up to me in time for public comment. For anyone online that would like to make public comment, please announce yourself during introductions or put your name in the chat so that we know you'd like to speak, and I will call on you. And if you are presenting to the board today, when you step up to the front table, please make sure you turn the microphone on using the button on the base, and the microphone is on when there's a red light showing up around the top. And also a reminder to position the microphone fairly close to yourself because it doesn't pick up very well if the microphone's too far from you. So with that, we are going to go into introductions. I'm Zan O'Gru, Board Chair.
Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Rachel McEnany, County Administrator.
And then we usually do introductions in the room, so I'm going to move on to James.
James Morales, Benton County Clerk.
And guests as well, so.
Nick Wallace.
My name is Justin Warwick for Benton County Public Works, and I'm Chief Steward of Ask Me Local.
And I'm Dawn Dale. I work for the Sheriff's Office, and I'm the President of Ask Me Local 2064.
Glad to be here out of the conference, and I am Ask Me Local member and listening.
Aubrey Cloud, just a member of the public.
Jeff Tenor, Charlotte, Benton County Sheriff.
Lieutenant Jeremy Joel, Benton County Jail.
She has no cell phone.
Tammy Love, Community Resources.
South Purdue Environmental Health Program Manager.
Dan Brown, San Diego Coordinator for San Diego.
Christine Moskow, Community Health Center.
I'm Warren G. T. Allen.
Bailey Malau, Community Walthanger, Benton, Windburn.
I'm Greg, Mississippi County Administrator.
I'm Eric White, Mississippi State Department of Fish and Fishery.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
And do we have anyone joining us online today? Okay, with that, we'll move on to reviewing the agenda. I know that we are not going to have an executive session today, so we'll strike that from the agenda. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, then we will move into the proclamations, followed by comments from the public. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. Morning, Commissioners. James Morales, Benton County Clerk and Records and Elections Department Director. I'm here to read the proclamation in the matter of proclaiming September 15th through October 15th, Hispanic Heritage Month in Benton County. It's proclamation P2024-018. So during National Hispanic American Heritage Month, we pause to celebrate the immeasurable contributions Hispanic, I'm sorry, Hispanic and Latinx individuals have made to our nation. The history of Hispanic and Latinx people in the U.S. predates the founding of our nation, with roots in the land as indigenous people that make up its rural and linguistic diversity as explorers and conquerors seeking to expand Spain's dominion. The Spanish West became part of Mexico with its independence in 1821, and then part of the United States in 1848. American Hispanic communities are a rich mix of indigenous, Mexican, and Spanish cultures that have contributed to the fabric of this country. Hispanic and Latinx communities trace their heritage back to indigenous, European, and African roots in Spain, North America, Central America, South America, and the Caribbean. With the passage of the 1965 Immigration and Nationality Act and the civil wars from Cuba, El Salvador, Nicaragua, and Guatemala, the United States Hispanic community became increasingly diverse. In accordance with the national theme "Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together", Benton County's observance celebrates the achievements, histories, traditions, cultural diversity, and the social, political, and cultural contributions made by Hispanic Latinx Americans. This month, we honor the spirit of innovation, resilience, and the community that defined the Hispanic and Latinx experience. The theme recognizes all Hispanic and Latinx Americans who have been trailblazers, social justice activists, and game changers, who have paved the way for future generations. Trailblazers such as Cesar Chavez, Dolores Huerta, Jose M. Hernandez, Alexandra Ocasio-Cortez, Sonia Sotomayor, and many others defied social norms and systemic barriers and cleared the path for future community leaders. They helped us to understand there are no boundaries that we can overcome, what we can do and what we can offer to the world. Hispanic and Latinx American Heritage Month is an incredible opportunity to speak with one voice and to acknowledge the crucial role Hispanic and Latinx people have or continue to play in shaping the future of our country and the world. We celebrate and recognize Hispanic and Latinx Americans as undeniable change agents and positive contributors to our country and the local communities. In reflecting on our nation's rich Hispanic and Latinx heritage, let us take pride in our unique and vibrant history and recommit to a future of freedom, power, prosperity, and opportunity for all. Do I read this part?
You don't have to.
Oh, I thought maybe this is where you read it. Therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that September 15th to October 15th, 2024, is Hispanic American Heritage Month.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Benton County, proclamation number P2024-018.
Second.
All in favor signify with an "aye".
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, James.
And I would like to add that former Commissioner Annabel Baromeo is with us in spirit this morning. She has a great history story to tell, and I really appreciated her perspectives.
Thank you. So moving on, comments from the public. First is Nick Wallace. Yeah.
Can you hear? Okay. Basically, I'm just going to read this letter, if I may, and if there's any questions, let me know. This is in regards to my critical follow-up transportation issue, which many of you are familiar with. For those who may not be as familiar with this situation, you may refer to my letter of 9/4 and the supporting documentation that went with it, which can both be obtained from any one of the Commissioners or by contacting myself directly at 541-929-6356. I would first like to express my deep appreciation for all the hard work that each of you has been doing in your own way to find a resolution to my unusual and very challenging transportation issue. It means a great deal to me, and I am deeply touched by all your efforts. Furthermore, I can feel and truly understand how, much like myself, you can feel deeply frustrated and disappointed at times when the answers are not yet clear. I have always felt that the solution that is eventually found for my situation would somehow help many others in need as well. As I have come to learn something of the difficult and challenging difficulties that Polk County, Benton County, the Bentonary Transit System, BAT, and others are facing in the rural transportation sector at large, I have often focused my questioning on understanding how those organizations themselves can best be helped. To solve their problem would solve not only mine, but those of many other people also in desperate need. In the end, that may prove to be true after all. Because the reason I am here today is to bring news of a new program that may bring much-needed assistance to many people in many underserved rural communities as well. When Commissioner Zan first discovered and mentioned this program to me, we both thought of it as something that might help farther down the line. While that may still be the case, my research into this program has shown that it may be in a position to help me and your organization sooner than we imagined. The program is part of Oregon Project Independence, OPI, and the ODOT portion is called the Innovative Mobility Program, or the IMP. Their webpage states that this is a new initiative designed to improve access to public transportation for historically underserved communities whose access to resources and opportunities have been historically limited due to age, disability status, language, income, race, ethnicity, immigration status, or gender.
Nick, you've reached three minutes, so I'll ask you to try and summarize the rest.
Okay, I'm almost there. The key point is that there are pilot grants that are accepting applications right now through October 25th only from organizations exactly like Polk and Benton County, BAT and Dial-A-Bus. And awards could be granted as early as February 2025, as well as service expansion grants in the spring of 2025, and microgrants. Exhibes from these sections entitled "Pilot Grants Now Accepting Pre-Applications, Service Suspension Grants, and Microgrants", providing more information are listed at the end of this letter. However, why don't you go to the webpage directly for full information and updates? So... While Benton County and BAT should definitely qualify for the service expansion grants, the fact that they service both urban and rural areas, they make it more difficult for the pilot grants, unless there's a way to split the service provided into two different areas, one that serves the city of Corvallis urban area and one that serves the more outlandish areas. In that way, if the rural areas can be provided their own sufficient source of funding, then perhaps the current funding, which addresses the whole county, now could be dedicated to the city of Corvallis urban area only, thereby making more funds available to serve more people as well. In any case, there are multiple possibilities that could unfold, and the potential of one that could solve my situation starting up as early as February 2025. It's very realistic. The remaining portion, I'll sort it somewhere, I'll make this short.
Thank you.
Okay. Basically, given all these factors in my situation, I am asking that the Benton County be able to continue my service, which is scheduled to end in just four weeks, until this program's up and starting at the beginning of the year. And... Might be faster to read. So... The reason is because my physical situation is getting seriously worse, which includes vision problems, which I will not go into more. But the leg, the arm, the visual problems are getting worse as I've had to struggle with this issue and not do my exercise programs. The mental and physical stress I'm under that causes neck tension, et cetera, it has to be relieved. And so I'd also ask that in-town trips be allowed to minimize the amount of stress on my system, and I can explain more of that to others at a later date. In summary, the OPI IMP looks very promising, and I truly appreciate everyone's support and continued hard work on my behalf to identify and implement those short-term solutions that will still be needed until the actual long-term solution is found and implemented. Again, I really appreciate every one of you, and I would welcome an opportunity to meet with any of you collectively or individually to further discuss the situation because it is becoming very critical for me in just four weeks. Thank you very, very, very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Kager will meet with you shortly after his agenda item, so watch for him.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next folks, first up is Sarah Siddiqui. Sure.
Good morning, Commissioners and County Administrator. My name is Dawn Dale. I'm the President of Ask Me Local 2064. The bargaining team comes to you this morning after spending another day at mediation with management over trying to negotiate our collective bargaining agreement. At the end of the day, even though we were willing to stay later, management's bargaining team reported they had no more counters to give us. This left us with no choice but to call in pass, and we officially filed at 5:30 last night with the Employment Relations Board. Management seems to continue to neglect the one item we have repeatedly expressed is the most important. That request, which I've explained in an earlier email to you, is that whether you are non-rep or union, employees doing the same work should be paid the same amount. It really is a simple request, and even though our wages reflect a variance of 18-plus percent from current non-reps, we are not asking for this amount all upfront. We are simply asking that we have the same opportunity that you afforded the non-reps when you approved their increases effective January 1st of this year. As all of you are aware, the union has struggled with the current management, and it has had no choice but to file multiple unfair labor practices, which have gone to hearings, arbitration for not following collective bargaining safety language, and now moved from bargaining into mediation. I believe the reason things have been so difficult is because there is a lack of having a higher power since as a commissioner or county administrator at labor management and bargaining mediation meetings. Giving your power directly to the Human Resource Director simply isn't working and doesn't have to be this way. By the recent rulings from the hearings in favor of the union, it clearly shows that county management refuses to value and abide by the law and their contractual obligations. This is why I ask you to consider becoming part of the process. There's nothing that forbids it. When we are talking about important issues, it shouldn't be up to one person who then also picks other managers who won't challenge them in making it right for employees, especially when they were so instrumental in getting them their recent huge pay increases in January. Help make the employees, taxpayers, and union know you care. Help us to make this correct, contract right, as we are tired of being undervalued, and the bargaining team is tired of management's disregard of employees' rights and lack of seeing the value they have in the lives of the citizens of Benton County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, County Commissioners. Chair O'Gru and County Administrator. It's nice to see you all here again today, and thank you for giving me time to provide my feedback on how bargaining has been going for us. I currently serve as Benton County's Health Equity Coordinator and was a former EDI coordinator working out of the Board of Commissioners office. I'm a member of the union's bargaining team and a trustee on their board. As someone who's been sitting across the table from the management bargaining team, I felt like the people sitting across from us have not been taking what we're asking for seriously. I don't feel like they care about what we're asking for or why, and despite the amount of time and effort we've invested, we've gotten very little return. It's been six weeks since more than 100 union members attended a Board of Commissioners meeting to support what we are currently fighting for in bargaining. Many of us have provided public comment informing you about how important this contract is to us. You and employees take time out of their day to pour their hearts out and share incredibly personal details about the hardships they've been experiencing because they feel strongly about what we're asking for. You have employees who are single parents talking about not being able to afford summer activities for their children. You have employees who are cancer survivors who have to postpone electric payments to support themselves and keep themselves alive, or they're asking to receive sick leave donations from their colleagues while they're on pay leave organs so they can continue healing to come back to work. You've had employees who work a second job in addition to working for the county full-time so they can take care of their families. Employees who work with some of our most vulnerable community members and experience secondary trauma from what they witnessed on the job, but they can't afford therapy for themselves to cope with what they experience at work. You have employees who leave their families and loved ones at home and risk their own safety to clear our roads for us when we get snow or ice so that people like you and I can go look after our own families. And you have workers who can't even afford to live in the community they serve because the cost of living is so high and the county's pay scale is so regressive. I can go on, and I would love to, but you've heard all of this before. I have the privilege of working with amazing people, and this county is not short of incredible employees. The county would not function if it weren't for our hard work or our passion for serving our community. What the county is short on is equitable practices when it comes to how its employees are treated. For example, we just voted that September 15th through October 15th be declared Hispanic American Heritage Month. But reading a proclamation while egregiously mistreating and underpaying employees is not practicing equity. Without action, it's performative and insincere at best. The message I keep getting from the management bargaining team is that we are asking for too much. I don't think that the assurance that your employees are safe at work is asking for too much. I don't think that the assurance that your employees are paid enough to live here, to heal- heal from illness, to support their families, is asking for too much. And I especially don't think that asking for our cost of living to be evaluated according to the same standards and metrics as our nonrepresented counterparts is asking for too much. I'm looking forward to continuing to uplift my peers' voices and rights and hope that the members' leadership that rely on our work choose to do the same. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Administrator. As I said earlier, my name is Joseph Moore. For five years, I've had the privilege of being a Benton County employee, and for four years, I've had the honor of being the chief steward of Benton County Local 2064. Today is the first time in that time period that I've ever woken up torn by my own emotions. As the chief steward of this union, I could be no prouder than I am right now of defending the rights and the needs of 340-plus employees. But as a steward of the county, disheartened and embarrassed, knowing that we sit across from your bargaining team, Tracy Martino, $51,000 a year raise, Gary Stockoff, $36,000 a year raise, Debbie Sessions, $28,000 a year raise, and Ricky Garcia, $10,000 a year raise, that's just raises $125,000 a year in taxpayer funds for them to bulwark us and stonewall us for the last 10 months, hand us a wage proposal that does exactly the same that they got. It gives the highest amount to the highest paid and ignores the lowest paid. And as the only B-band employee that sits in the bargaining session, I am the lowest-paid person in that room every time we meet. It's disheartening. But we will not stop fighting for the members because I can't believe that Benton County is okay with letting 340 people be told they are worth less than the highest 1% of Benton County. Thank you.
With that, we're going to move on to our work session. Erica, is there anyone online that wished to comment? Thank you. Then we will move on into our work session. Item 5.1 of the Benton County Facilities Update with Rick Krager.
Morning, Commissioners. Here today to provide you the monthly project facilities update. Normally, Gary Stockoff or Paul Wall Senior would be here, but unfortunately, both of them are out on a much-deserved vacation, so you get me today, and I'll walk you through pages 14 of your, starting on page 14 of your packet through pages 20. So I'll begin with the courthouse project, and I'll start by saying that much of what was reported last month is essentially the same as this month. We still are at a place of waiting for our site work permits. I think one of the biggest challenges that we have that we're facing now is getting through the state permitting process in relation to SHPO. This has been an ongoing discussion. It has been making progress, but as we all know, these things sometimes take time to come to agreement, and I believe we are close. We will be having further discussions late this week, early next, to go through the final recommendations, and then, of course, we have to get sign-off by the state. The second piece then becomes the City of Corvallis. That also will be, I think, moving along quite effectively once we have our permits from the state. So again, that is the biggest piece holding us from moving to the next phase of getting into the ground. I think, as you all know, this is something that you've heard me say a lot that I do grow concerned is relates to as we move further and further into the fall and to the winter, particularly as we start to try to push ground. One of the big risks that we all know that we have is use of resources. We do have a three-year period in terms of our tax exempt resources, so this is something I'm starting to really keep my eye on. I know Debbie Sessions is also watching very closely, so we are getting at that critical moment where the construction does need to start. In this report, it does say mid-October. I would update that to say it looks more like November now in light of where we're at with the state permitting process. So again, all other aspects of the project, obviously land, acquisition, site development, design, all complete, ready to go. It's just a matter of getting through this last permitting process. The other piece I should mention, just from a quick budget update, you all know that we're dependent, we have all committed resources from the state. We have a balanced budget, but we also have to get the funding agreements in place with Oregon Judicial Department. So that continues to be an effort on myself, Gary, and Vance's part with the OJD in the state. They are working towards that, but it does put some pressures on us in relation to our resources because we're fronting all costs right now, and so those are resources that could potentially be sitting in our bank account or earning interest for the project. So that is an area that we're continuing to push on. I do want to provide on page 15, and Commissioner Ojero is good enough to point out on a couple of these, I want to just make sure there's some clarification in relation to the funding sources, and I will ask the project team to update this on futures, future reports. It does say Benton County at $48.5 million of resources. I want to be really clear that that is really approximately 40.5 of true Benton County resources in the form of cost of borrowing and general fund. The rest of it comes from our American Rescue Plan Act dollars as well as other federal resources that are mixed in. So again, while it's all our budget, I just want to make sure that we're clear in the future on exactly how much is, you know, from the dedication of the county coffers. And I'll update you also on the Emergency Operations Center in relation to that. Again, still on target for summer of 2026 as of this point. Obviously, the delay in getting started is going to require us to really escalate our work with Hoffman. I know they're eager to go in terms of construction, but we certainly will want to be moving forward rapidly to make sure that we stay in line with some of our agreements that we have with tax exempt bonds. So that's my update for the courthouse. I'll pause if there's any questions of the Commissioners before I move to the Crisis Center.
I do have a question, Rick, and I'm sorry if this puts you on the spot a little bit. You can always follow up after the meeting if that's better. I recently heard a concern from a constituent that they are worried that our budget is going to be full of overruns and it's going to cost us more than we anticipated. So I was just curious if you have a response to that.
No, Commissioner Wise, great question. I appreciate the question. Don't worry about putting me on the spot. I should have probably touched on this. As you will note in on page 14, we speak a little bit about the bidding process that we're going through, as you know, until we get to that point of actual construction. We don't have a locked-in price. Here's the good news, unlike a year ago when I was speaking to you, prices have gradually driven down. Our current estimate that we got was under budget. I can also assure you that we have put a lot of contingency into this budget because we recognize things happen. So understand the concerns, but I would also say that looking at the economics, we're at a good time where prices have drawn down slightly. Our recent estimate with our general contractor is again under budget and some pretty heavy contingencies that we've put in.
Thank you.
I guess my comment is, this is our second major project, the Crisis Center being the first, where we seem to be stuck doing paperwork in the summer and then start moving dirt late fall, winter, and it's disappointing there. There is more sense of urgency and people able to look at calendars and being a little more efficient with moving paperwork along. That's, I guess, everything we've been told, it's moving. We'll get the answer we want. It's just not when we want it. And the other thing I appreciate, I got on the EOC, it says Benton County, certain amount there, that it makes it a little sounding like, oh, we're flush with general fund money, and I'll let you go through that, but I remember $5 million from the state, and so it should have another column or line or two to explain. I think on the EOC, there is some Benton County funds, but it's not anywhere close to 8 million.
Agreed, Commissioner Malone. I will clarify on the Emergency Operations Center, and I can assure you, I'll talk to Gary and make sure that future reports have a little bit more specifics so that it can clearly show the general fund allocations versus those are more dedicated resources that we have. And I guess I just, again, want to say appreciation for your frustration on the paperwork. I get it, and I guess now having lived both sides of local and state government, I can maybe see both sides of this. A lot of the time, we have really, a lot of our struggle has been just with, you know, state process that we have to go through in terms of making sure that there is appropriate time to get public response, as well as just working through some of the bureaucracy we have to. I can, I want to shout out to Rachel, who has leveraged a lot of her contacts in relations to SHPO to try to help that process, and then I've also used some of my state contacts to try to be able to move this along. I think that's helped, but part of it has also just been the time process that you have to go through, particularly around public comment. We got a surprise 30 days that we had to hold because, again, the changes required more feedback from the public, which we now have gone through, but now it's just getting the conditions in place. So lots of appreciation for your frustration, and we will continue to push as hard as we So I'll move on to the Crisis Center, pages 16 and 17, and let's, you know, get a little positive here. I think, you know, every morning, as I like to joke when I'm coming to work from Siam, and I like to drive through Corvallis and get a chance to look and see what is new, and this morning, just excited every day I come by to see the building structure come up. Parts of the roof is starting to go into place now, or at least the framework of the roof. This project, we all know, we've had our set of challenges in relation to that, but I truly believe we're at a place now where this is moving to the stages of, you know, getting us to a place of, you know, hopefully opening in the spring is still the target time. At this point, there's not any major issues that I need to bring to your attention. Everything is within budget. Unlike the others, this one is pretty well detailed out in terms of the resources so that you can see we are pretty, you know, to Commissioner Wise's point on the courthouse, this is one that is pretty thin as it relates to room. We do have standard contingencies put in place, but, you know, we're obviously going to be watching that closely. But at this point, everything is on track. I can begin to speak, and I know this isn't necessarily part of the typical facility report, but the piece that we're really focused on now is operations. And I know Behavioral Health Director Damian in April Holland, we're working through negotiations in relation to those rates and working with the state, and that's something that is, is going to be, I think, needing to really be escalated and ramped up here in the very near future so that we can meet our timeline of opening. But overall, Commissioners, not no challenges or barriers to report. Everything's on budget and moving along nicely. There is a picture on page 18 that I think is, again, a little bit behind. I'd like to get a more current one. If you go out there now, it's got the sides on, it's got the roof structure up, so it's real exciting to see come together.
On this budget, there is, which is on page 17 in the packet, there's six line items of funding sources, and I don't see Benton County listed. Is that, is that accurate?
Commissioner Malone, that is absolutely accurate. This is a fully funded project. There were no match requirements on our federal grants unlike other ones that we have had. So this one is fully funded through assets and resources that we've been able to get. And even when we ran into some of the budgetary challenges with our tanks, through the help of our health department, we were able to reach out to Oregon Health Authority and get grants to help fill that gap as well. So very proud that this is one that we've completely pulled all resources from outside the county.
Well, and I know it took a lot of hard work to secure these funding sources, and the team is to be congratulated for finding the money to construct this much-needed facility.
Absolutely. Great team effort.
Onto the EOC.
Last report in terms of pages 19, 20 of your packet. So as you all know, the Emergency Operations Center is sited out next to the courthouse and District Attorney's Office, so we are rolling that in for efficiency to be all part of the same scheduling, particularly when we get to construction. We have made tremendous progress in relation to the design. We're at about 50% in terms of readiness in relation to the design. The next one, the hope is really to get us to that place by mid-October of establishing the final design so that we can get to a guaranteed maximum price for the construction, which is, you know, hopefully, again, that will all fall into place with the courthouse and being able to lock that in with our construction. And then, again, back to Commissioner Wise's point, we will then be secured with our locked-in, and we'll be able to rely on our contingencies if necessary. So again, feel really good about where this is at. I know, I think, hopefully, the sheriff is behind me and smiling still, and I think it's been a good team process. I think we were able to, to address some of his concerns in relation to space and size, and, you know, it's never, you know, we always like to have things more and larger, but I think that he feels good, at least in terms of the progress that we have made in getting here. So the things I do want to point out, as mentioned earlier, is to provide a little more clarity in relation to the funding sources. This one is especially important because it would give the indication that $8.1 million of that is all Benton County money, when in reality, of that portion, you're only talking approximately $600,000 is committed. General fund resources, a portion of it, and other is our capital improvement program, which is a newer resource just recently committed because of some of the road work that needs to be done there. So the rest of the resources, though, half a million dollars have come from state lottery-backed bonds that we're able to secure, another $2.5 million from our American Rescue Plan Act dollars, and then, of course, you see the $1 million for the FEMA. So next time, I will make sure that's much clearer, but this is another project similar to the Crisis Center where a small portion of county resources, but the rest of it was through the hard work of U3 as well as many staff in trying to advocate for resources to fund this important project. So all in all, good shape. Again, this falls kind of in sync with, with the courthouse. Everything is, again, kind of waiting our permitting process. I will, real quickly, Commissioner Ojero, just make a mention of our facility project down the street, which I, we're not reporting on that, but there is still a HVAC renovation project that we're finishing up. It's the last stages of that. I'm very proud that we're well under budget in relation to the resources provided. Again, I will say this is another, again, credit to U3 in terms of leveraging the state legislature to fully fund that and also now provide resources that are going to help the Monroe Health Center because with the leftover dollars, it can be dedicated. Talk about that more in another time as we move forward with that project. But again, that wraps up my report and happy to get any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, Rick, you mentioned, you know, some help from some of our partners, and I just want to note that Dan Rayfield was instrumental and Peter DeFazio a couple years ago, Merkley Whiden, they've all been very helpful with these projects, and we very much appreciate their support. They've all been very helpful with these projects and we very much appreciate their support.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're moving on to our consent calendar and it contains the August 20th, 2024 meeting minutes.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Thank you. How are we doing? Ready to move on? Okay, into new business. The first item is the Notice of Intent for Jail-Based Medications for Opioid Use Disorder Grant Program. And presenting will be Sheriff Ben Arsdale and Jeremy Jewell. And Don Wright.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have Lieutenant Jewell and Don here with me. This is basically where our intention is to apply for a grant for opioid use disorders in the facility. And I will let Jeremy Jewell and Don kind of take it from there.
My name is Lieutenant Jeremy Jewell. I work inside the jail. And currently we're working on a program to get medication assisted medications inside the jail. And we're getting the basics squared away as far as the grant application goes. We have the doctor in place, which is from the health department. Much experience in MOD, MOUD program. And, and she is also our new jail doctor, Dr. Miechek. So that experience alone is a tremendous asset to us in the jail. From that, we were able to figure out what her processes are going to be for medications, looking at costs associated with those medications and looking at the grant and how much that's funding. It's going to be a heavy, heavy lift as far as finances go from that grant to pay for those medications. So there's not a lot left over. We're looking at a new lockable fridge, some urinalysis testing kits, and then the rest would be going to the medications. So the grant total is 148,000, I believe. Yeah. And so at this time, what we have to offer at this point for the program, it would be fully funded at this point.
Are there any questions?
I'm assuming this is one time funding.
As of right now, they're saying it is, but their hope is to go forward and to get additional funding after this application process.
This is an area that where the Oregon Health Authority and state legislature are really committed to, to funding. There has been some discussion about the formula though, and about increasing it so that it's more need-based rather than just population formula based, and that would help us. Okay. Well, I'm definitely in support of this. It's been something that we've been wanting to do for quite a while. So I'm glad to see that the state is providing an opportunity to help us launch this opportunity for medication to assist with opioid use disorder. Is there any motion or any further discussion?
I'll move to approve the intent to apply for the jail-based medications for opioid use disorder grant program for the Benton County Jail.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. And I do want to point out once again that I'm just thrilled to see the level of cooperation between the community health centers and the, the jail and sheriff's office on this program. It's fantastic.
And people at home probably can't see the nice tie that the sheriff has, but.
I, he's, he's making a sink. It's all for us, but I heard, I heard he had another event this morning, so.
Yes. Yeah, how was breakfast? That's awesome. I'd hoped to make it.
I will say John from Horsepower put together a video for Carver and it was amazing. So thank you, John.
That's great. Okay, next up is Lacey Muller and Christine Mosba from the Community Health Clinics. New Access Point Funding Grant Letter of Support.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here this morning. We have a, no PowerPoint this time. We have come and talked to you about this a couple of times, formally and informally, around the new access point funding opportunity for a clinic in Albany. And so we are just requesting a letter of support, which you'll find in the board packet. If you're in agreement with that, we, there's, it's really competitive. You know, we're keeping that in mind, you know, having appropriate expectations, but there's consensus and agreement across health centers around the country that, you know, applying is a really important step in terms of seeing where federal funding, the budget goes over the next year and having your application in, in the hopper is part of that.
Excellent. Is there any discussion?
From earlier presentations, you mentioned competitive and I remember, I think this was the right program, a point score for the Albany area and it was pretty good, not great. Is that?
Yeah. So you get bonus points for any score over 70 and Albany's score is 60. It's the highest unmet need score in our service area, which is all of Benton and Lynn Counties.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve and sign the HERSA New Access Point Funding Letter of Support.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
And thanks for no PowerPoint.
Well, and thank you for all the just crazy diligent work that you have done, almost running around in circles. And it's just fabulous. Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you. Next up, we have another letter of support. And this one is for the Benton Soil and Water Conservation District, which is applying for a grant for community action on invasive pests. It will support their cooperative weed management area. And the letter is found on page 74 of the packet. Are there any questions? It's the first time in quite a while that there's been state money, I believe, for cooperative weed management areas. So it's a good thing.
And this is referring to plant-based pests, is that correct?
This is invasive plants, weeds.
Well, I learned something because whenever I think of pests, I think of more like animal type. So yeah, I support this.
Ready for a motion? I move to approve signing the letter of support for the community action on invasive pests in Benton County grant application.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Okay, thank you. Passes unanimously. Next item is transfer of county-owned property to the city of Albany. Order number D 2024 dash 052. Laurel Byer, morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and County Administrator. I am here today to talk to you about transferring a piece of property in North Albany. It is at the corner of, the southwest corner of Gibson Hill Road and North Albany Road. I mentioned this at a previous meeting. It is actually part of the same agreement where we have been transferring road jurisdiction to the city of Albany over the past several years. And just recently, we transferred Northwest Gibson Hill Road. And so what I've put together and taken a look at is the, the county acquired the property in about 1984 for the grand sum of $25,000. And so really it doesn't make sense now that it's completely surrounded by the city there. The county has no need or, or, you know, use of that property. And besides the fact, we have agreed to transfer it over to the city of Albany for their use in accessing a sewer lift station that is just south of the property. And so it, it makes sense. It's time. Are there any questions?
If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve order number D 2024 days 052, the transfer of county-owned property described in M days 57, 929 days 84, Benton County deed records located at the southwest corner of Northwest Gibson Hill Road and North Albany Road to the city of Albany, Oregon. Oregon, Rachel.
Second. Do you want Rick to be in the motion? Sorry.
All in favor, please indicate with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Thank you.
Actually, so I did think of a question, Laurel. So you mentioned that the whole package of roads to be transferred over. Is this the last one or is there still more to come?
So there are probably still more to come, but we need to go back to the city of Albany and discuss what improvements might need to be made on those. So the existing IGA, we're done with the short-term projects. So now we need to be looking at long-term and other opportunities to improve those roads and transfer them. So more to come.
Thank you.
Well, and this seems like a simple transaction, but in the packet, it's about 20 pages worth of material. So.
Yes. Hey, but no PowerPoint.
That even though it seems simple, it takes a lot of work on our part to do these transactions, no matter how simple and small they are.
Thank you. I think the last time that Laurel presented to us, we asked about the underlying IGA. And so thank you for including the intergovernmental agreement in the packet so that we could see all of the subject streets and the, the detail that went into this initial agreement. I really hope that we can also eventually come to the same sort of agreement with the city of Corvallis and with the city of Philomath about street transfers. It would be very helpful.
Yes, it's, it's been an actual very useful tool. You're right. It helps us plan too on, on what projects get more priority. So that way we can move them to the city's jurisdiction maintenance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, onward, we, our next item is a memorandum of agreement on grievance settlement regarding uninterrupted meal and rest periods. And Matt Weatherill and Tam, from Junel and Tammy Webb from Human Resources are presenting.
Good morning, Commissioners. So what this is involving is we had, it came to our attention in July that one of our staff members was not getting his required meal and rest periods. So there was a conversation between ASME and the manager involved, which was Derek Herring and Tammy Webb, regarding this, and we've come to a settlement. I'm going to pass over to Tammy to kind of explain the backstory and what went on with this.
Good morning. So yes, as Matt stated, there was a grievance that was submitted. We met, me being myself and the manager, met with the employee and with ASME to not only talk about, you know, the issue of the employee not receiving its meal and rest periods, excuse me, but also the employees' scheduling going, going forward. And so through those discussions, we came to the agreement that you have in your packet.
I have a question. So I mean, generally, so we, we saw that something was wrong. We're doing something about it. That's, that's good. What has been done to make sure that this issue doesn't happen again in the future?
So what we've done is the employee's schedule was adjusted. We have scheduled break period prior to the youth showing up. And then we're shutting down crew at either noon or 12:30 for the half hour lunch. And then he is taking his break on completion of crew at three in the afternoon.
Okay. And is there any, I know that maybe the nature of their jobs specifically is different than maybe some of the nature of the other jobs in your department, but I just want to make sure that other, other employees aren't getting rid of this situation as well.
We've addressed that as well. When we do run groups, we're making sure that we have that coverage to where the staff can get that required time away. It's caused some juggling of staff, but we're making it happen as, as needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am grateful that we came to a resolution. And I note that it states in this memorandum that it doesn't cause any precedent in terms of settlement, but I'm grateful that we addressed the scheduling issue and that it's been highlighted and hopefully will address the needs of all employees moving forward, not just in the juvenile department. If there are no other questions, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to approve the memorandum of agreement regarding the payment of time for uninterrupted meal and rest periods for the employee in the juvenile department.
Second.
All in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
Eye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our environmental health fee schedule. And we will have Scott Kruger and April Holland join us at the front table. This time we do have a PowerPoint.
We're back to the PowerPoints. I'm not sure why the room cleared out. I mean, who doesn't want to hear about environmental health fee schedules? I think it's really exciting. So, good morning. As you may recall, the last couple of years, I was sort of in the driver's seat and, and Scott is permanently in place as our environmental health program manager. And he's going to run and I'm going to be his wing person today and fill in anything you'd like me to, Scott.
Thank you for seeing us this morning.
Scott, you may want to put the mic a little closer. Thank you.
So as you're aware, just a little background, we come before the board every year to get our, our fees approved for you and for the Oregon Health Authority as well. And we are a fee for services program and we're just listing out a number of the activities or areas where we have inspectors doing work. Some context, last year, we, the board approved a 7% increase for our fees. Yesterday, I met with the Food Service Advisory Committee. We're struggling to get quorum with that group. So while we weren't officially able to make a motion during the meeting, the members that were present, two of the three are restaurant operators. And we reviewed that with them. So in 2023, we increased by 3% and we had no fee adjustments in 2022 due to COVID. Just an overview of our historical data, we generally range in fee increases annually from 3% to 5%. This is an overview of our current budget. See, our salaries and benefits are increasing by 5% and an overall increase of about 4% in our operating budget. This is a breakdown of our hourly rate calculations. We have four environmental health field staff. And our total hours to do the field work and administrative time, 251 hours. And that gives us a total of 5,004 hours to work with our, for our hourly rate calculations. Under a full cost recovery model, using that calculation, we're at 268.96 for an hourly rate. And that, that rate would actually cover the other work that we do in the community for daycares, fraternities, sororities, school lunch programs. We have some legal limitations in OAR that cap our administrative costs at 15%. We have some legal limitations in OAR that cap our administrative costs at fifteen percent and we've included that language here for you. This is adjustments of our indirect costs. You can see that our total administrative costs are twenty three percent, but by OAR, we're capped at fifteen percent. So to make that up, we're looking at this eight percent or a total of ninety two thousand, two hundred and twenty two dollars of general fund to meet the discrepancy.
Just jump in really quickly and say that's the, that's the minimum general fund contribution to have the remainder of fees cover all of the EH budget.
So on our partial cost recovery model, using an hourly rate of two hundred and fifty one dollars an hour, we recover ninety three percent of our costs. That actually corresponds to a rate increase of ten percent for our licensed facility operators. And this option would result in general fund contributions decreasing by about forty one percent.
If I could, just briefly, I know it's been a year since we've come and talked through all of this. And it takes me a minute to, to recall all of the pieces. When Scott and I started coming to the board, we certainly have a staff recommendation, but also want to provide a few scenarios so that you can see the, what the breakdown looks like in terms of the general fund contribution, what it does to the licensing fees. And provide some examples of what the actual fees look like. So just wanted to provide that overview. Can you go back?
Can. Okay. Now forward.
I don't think we've gone over this one yet. This is our staff.
Oh, okay. So yeah, for the adjustments for indirect costs at an eighty nine percent recovery rate, we're looking at an hourly rate of two hundred and thirty nine dollars an hour, which corresponds to a five percent increase. And a contribution actually decrease of about four percent over last year. And this is our different case scenarios at ten, five, and keeping the fees flat. Our recommendation is the middle ground at a five percent increase, which is consistent historically with what the board has approved. I would like to mention too that I sit on the conference of local environmental health supervisors in our August meeting. We reported out as to our fee increases and I want to say there was thirty, thirty of thirty six counties represented. And it ranged from no fee increases to some of the metro areas increasing by twenty three percent. So I feel like five percent is fairly nominal compared to the spread that I was hearing from other supervisors around the state.
I think too, something that's important to note is that, you know, we do typically see the increases every year with a couple of exceptions around the COVID years. In the early two thousands, there were a couple of real big shock years to the community when we had, I think it was thirteen or fourteen percent increase at one time. I think as, as, as we come annually and look at what is budgeted and make those nominal increases to ensure our needs are met and we're not also shocking the community that finding that and meeting that middle ground is important. This, this, these scenarios were also run across the desk of our interim CFO. We want to make sure that, and we also had a sit down with one of the financial analysts to ensure that budget versus reality. We decided to go with budget due to some cost savings we had in, in the staffing and the salaries and benefits side. So we are trying to be as, as accurate as, as we possibly can. And these, this five percent increase for the last four years, the cost recovery rate has been eighty eight percent. So we're really trying to make it a, a middle ground across the board.
And we're just giving you some examples of some of the, of our licensure categories and the, and the differences in the, in the, in the, if the fees were adjusted by ten percent or five percent. And that is it.
Thank you. This has always been the most complex of all fee increases across our departments. And I appreciate how well you have now distilled it down so that it is clear. And it's a very interesting challenge. I like the idea of trying to keep our the cost recovery rate fairly consistent and think about that as a target, that eighty eight, eighty nine percent, that seems really reasonable to me. I think we've struggled before in terms of how to think about this. And the other thing I really appreciate is the example of all the other counties rates. They're not always apples and oranges because we have different fees than other counties. We slice and dice things differently. But, you know, just looking through it, on many fees were higher, on some were lower. And it's, it's always an interesting mix. I'm grateful to hear that you had an opportunity to consult with all of the other, well, not all, but thirty of the other thirty six counties about their rates and increases. That gives me some comfort also to know that we're not way out there at an outlier. So with that, I am comfortable with our approach and I know that it does take into account the charitable work that we're doing as well. So there is that general fund contribution to cover full cost of the service and also for those nonprofit restaurants and entities that take advantage of your services as well. Any questions? If not, I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I do have, you know, organized my thoughts here and I appreciate the discussion of the history and, and so and I'm, you get extra points for mentioning Rick Rigger's name and he's been involved in the discussion because when would these fee increases go into effect?
Our fee structure runs January one to December thirty one, and that's, that's actually modeled off of licensure for the Oregon Health Authority. It's in state statute that it's really geared towards restaurant facilities and their, and their licensure period.
The reason I was asking, I was thinking of the upcoming budget development and this is ahead of that and wanting to make sure that we're in the ballpark as far as where we need to be as, as far as the county budget and trying to balance that off against keeping any rate increases as reasonable as we can. So I think I'm comfortable with the proposal here.
I can make a motion if we're ready. Move to approve a five percent increase in environmental health fees effective January first, twenty twenty five. And request that health department staff bring forth an order reflecting as much at a future board meeting.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate with an eye. 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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, before we head into our ARPA item, we will take a five minute break. Well, let's make it ten twenty. We will reconvene at ten twenty.
To call us back into session at eight twenty, uh, ten twenty-three this morning. And we will next address the funding status report for the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we received from the federal government. And presenting will be Debbie Sessions and Jeremy Martin from Financial Services. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. So a month or so ago, you had a report from Jeremy, kind of in the narrative tone about how we have used the ARPA funds. This report is more on the technical financial side of where we are, what we might have left, which can then morph into a conversation about what do we want to do with that? With that, I will turn it over to Jeremy.
Good morning. I presented this spreadsheet. It's kind of really cut and dry. So we've had eleven million, eight hundred thousand and some change in ARPA expenses. And we have about six point one left in obligations. And what we have, so this isn't the most up today. This was prepared in August. Here we are. Well, it's October first now, jeez Louise. But what we have available is pretty close to that one seventy-seven. It's a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. And that is because we had a reduction in administrative costs. You know, the position was filled and then it was empty for a little while. And so that kind of offset the ninety-seven thousand dollars predicted as unobligated. And so there is a little bit of money in there. I don't know what else you'd like other than that on the finances. I mean, we can go through the cost if you'd like.
So with respect to the six point one million that is obligated but not expended, I see the three of the projects are in process. With the courthouse project, there's a chunk of contingency funds, but those funds need to be obligated by the end of the year also. So of what I'm, the main reason I wanted to hear this report is to understand kind of what the range of dollar funds might be, that we might need to make some rapid decisions about obligating before December thirty-first. So as I understand it, you said a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, that's completely, that's available for your bottom line?
A hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-six cents.
But potentially a little bit more than that if we don't use the courthouse contingency or don't obligate those funds before the end of the year?
Correct. I would invite Rick Krieger to make comment on that. His indication to me has been that in fact, we will use that entire amount, but we don't know yet.
Thank, thanks, Debbie. Appreciate it and appreciate Jeremy in the report. Debbie's absolutely correct. So obviously, as you all know, back last, what was it, October? We were thinking contingency. Of course, we didn't know where costs were going to go. As I mentioned in my early report, last estimate that we had was right at our budget and we're staying pretty close to it. So at this point, I would anticipate that entire amount that's up there to be as an obligation in our contract that we put together. Now, one of the things, as Jeremy well knows, that we also have to be concerned about is ensuring that that six million dollars there is in actual contract obligation. I think the one that we're really watching closely is the Emergency Operations Center. Because again, as you all know, we're trying to get to that place of getting through permits so that we can lock into that contract. I think we'd be fine with the courthouse because of other resources that we've allocated, but the EOC is the one that I have identified. So, long story short, I think that your courthouse resources, you can count on pretty much being completely obligated. I would also just make a quick comment and Jeremy can respond more specifically to this in terms of any allocation. And I don't know if that one seventy-seven is what we're looking at there, that in terms of total available, one piece, one fifty, excuse me. One piece that I don't know if has been accounted for is, I know when we first put our dollars into our LC water project, I think we were at approximately one point six. I think it's a little less than that now. But the piece that I thought that the remainder would go into would be a commitment on the sewer side to be able to blend with the federal resources that we got. So I would just put that out there. I have been talking to Gary about, okay, can you get that committed between now and twelve thirty-one? So I just want to add that before there's any maybe major decision around allocating resources to maybe check in on that to see how Gary's massaging those resources to come together.
Okay. And so the biggest component of uncertainty from what I can tell then, in terms of dollar sums, is with respect to that final cost agreement with Hoffman Construction, which will cover both courthouse and EOC. And that final agreement will be in place only after we have the permits in place. So that's looking like it'll be November-ish.
Well said, Commissioner Ojo, that's exactly. Again, I have no concerns or anticipate that you won't use that money based on the estimates we have. But right now, the big thing is just to get those contracts in place so that we can meet Jeremy's or the ARPA's requirement of obligation.
Okay. I'm going to pass it to my fellow commissioners for any questions or comments or suggestions, whatever you wish.
Well, a general comment, this is a nice summary of three or four years' worth of projects. And it's, at this point, a living historical document. There was so much happening, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, that it's a bit of a blur. I know we did a lot and this, by looking at the financial piece, kind of tell where, where the money went and just, it's, it's a, thank you, federal government for stepping up and making sure that we were not only functional, but able to make some actual progress on some of our projects. So it's fun times, but we got through them and I think in pretty good shape. And so give credit where credit is due. I remember spring of twenty twenty and county administrator Kirby kind of going around shouting, "Don't spend any money." Because we didn't know what was happening. Budgets are falling apart and, you know, in retrospect, probably could have spent a little more money, but we, in some sense, were flying blind. And so got through twenty twenty and so I appreciate the summary of projects that we were able to fund and keep county government going and help our local nonprofits and got through it in fairly good shape. And it's nice that we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, I realize that's a rounding error in what we're talking about here, but just appreciate the summary.
And just to echo that, I, I think this afforded us the ability to do projects that were shovel-ready, that were on the shelf for a long time because they, we just didn't have the funds to do it. And this afforded us that opportunity. So it, this was a great shot in the arm for the county.
So I just want to make sure that I understand everything correctly. So on, I'm looking here in the chart and it talks about project name, obligation, and the notes. So when we talk about they need to be obligated, that's the number that's under obligation, but those have not yet been obligated?
No. Everything has been, everything above, so the eleven point eight million has been spent, not just obligated, but spent. The six, almost six point one million has been obligated but not spent. So those are in progress.
So we have to just obligate them by the end of the year and not spend them? Is that correct?
They have to be spent by the end of twenty-six.
By the end of twenty-six, okay.
Right. But they have to be obligated, meaning they have to be in contract, under agreement in some form by twelve thirty-one, twenty-four.
Okay, very good. And then the total available, I mean, it says one seventy-seven, but it sounds like that's more like one fifty, one fifty-seven, okay. And Rick, you were saying that that might end up towards LC sewer or could you repeat that?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Commissioner Wise. And again, I just would ask that Jeremy and Debbie maybe check with Gary because we've been, this, the LC project has been a little challenging because we had the federal resources that come in late that was specifically for the sewer. So we've had to do a lot of mixing and matching. And so I just want to make sure, I, I want to believe that Gary's assumption was whatever was left from the one point six million originally, plus what comes with the federal government would go to the sewer project. But they can, they can validate that. And if that's the case, Commissioner Wise, then that would complete your obligation requirement by twelve thirty-one. I think the other thing I would just add that if, for whatever reason, you don't have an obligation, there are opportunities, particularly since like the courthouse and the emergency, more like courthouse, where you have a blend of resources, there's the ability to kind of do some shifting around to where you make the commitment of ARPA resources and then free up maybe more flexible resources if you want to be able to target that and have a little bit more room. Again, I would only cross that bridge once you determine you have maybe some extra obligation or you've, you've, you have some available dollars that you need to put into some internal contract before twelve thirty-one. So just want you to know that there's ways that we can, or they can operate quickly in terms of shifting things around so you don't have to make a decision at the last minute.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate that. And yes, that's my understanding, we're not trying to sit here and think of ways to spend it. But I will note, you know, we've heard from a community member that's having issues funding transportation. I don't know if this could be used for that or not, but that just occurred to me, so.
Commissioners, I think it's worth also noting a piece to this that, and again, I think Commissioner Malone is probably more read into this through the capital improvement program. But one of the things, as you remember last October, is when we were trying to fill all of our project holes, we had to look to CIP, we had to look to American Rescue Plan Act. I think as we've moved through the ARPA process, there were, was more flexibility than initially anticipated at that time. What that has done is, is enabled some capacity. So when we're talking about capacity here, ARPA, while it's limited, it may free up some capacity on the CIP side in relation to resources that we need to look at. Now, clearly, there are some things that we've all talked about in terms of, one being, of course, the, some of the road needs as it relates to the Emergency Operations Center. But I just want to point out that you have some flexibility, probably some other areas that the committee will be looking at in the near future.
Thank you. I think looking back at the ARPA dollars, they have been wonderful in order to be able to reach some of those projects we haven't been able to get to for many years and, and to make the most of some of the things that we did do, like to improve the HVAC system in this building so that we minimize the risk of respiratory diseases. And that was fantastic. My only, my big regret is that we weren't able to have a second round of community grants funding. And that's just unfortunate. Grateful that we had fifteen percent of our funds go towards community grants. Would have loved to see a little bit more. There's no motion on this, so if there aren't any further questions, okay. There is a motion, oh, just to accept it.
I move to accept the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four federal ARPA project financial status report.
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Thank you for the report. Okay. Next up is discussion and action to fill two vacancies on the disposal site advisory committee. And we, as you will recall, made a series of appointments. Yes, Bailey, if you'd like to come up and join us, please do. We made a series of appointments in July, June, that, to fill out the disposal site advisory committee. And we had close to thirty applicants for those positions, including some folks that were, had, could continue in their roles that they'd previously filled. So with that, we went back to that list rather than applying again, once we had a couple of resignations from the committee. So we have two seats to fill. And we did look at the list again in order to draw from that pool. And we had Maura Kwiatkowski make some phone calls to the folks that had, were our top next selection of applicants. And out of those five, I believe that three are available. Bailey, do, can you fill us in on the last bit and we can make our decisions? I've got it if you don't.
And Maura is also involved in it since we've transitioned towards over. Maura, if you'd like to come up?
And I do have those names here. The three previously interviewed applicants that confirmed they were still interested were Charlene Carroll, Diane Cassidy, and David Livisay. So we have two seats to fill. So I would take a proposal for the two that we would like to appoint to the disposal site advisory committee at this time. We did have one woman and one man resign, so I don't know if we want to keep gender balance, but it doesn't have to be.
Well, I think, I think if I'm remembering correctly, there was far more males than females in here.
Yes.
I, I will say though, with this list of people, they're all great candidates and I would be happy with any of them. And that's not very helpful, but.
Yeah. David Livisay is also an engineer. We have a handful of engineers on the group and has quite relevant experience. And he has been the most persistently interested since we interviewed him almost, almost a year ago. I can't believe that, but that's true. It was December a year ago. So I guess I would lean towards appointing David Livisay and, and one of the others.
I do remember being particularly impressed with Charlie Carroll or Charlene, I think she goes by Charlie. But, you know, Diane would be a good choice as well.
Commissioner Malone?
Uh, I, right now, by my notes here, I was impressed with David Livisay and I'm trying to read my notes on our interviews with the other two candidates. I think I would lean towards Charlie Carroll. But both she and Diane Cassidy were, I think, well qualified.
Then I would, is there a motion in the packet or should I just, like, I was going it? I move to appoint Dave Livisay and Charlene Carroll to the DSAC vacancies.
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners.
We are zipping through our agenda this morning.
And I think it's worth noting all of the applicants for DSAC, once again, for applying, being willing to step up and serve the community in this fashion. It's much appreciated.
Agreed. Agreed.
Well, and along those lines, I've suggested that we keep track of people that have applied for one committee and, especially if they've. for one committee and, especially if they've indicated some flexibility that when we're looking for other vacancies, we go back to people that have already expressed interest in helping Bethany County.
Thank you. Okay, with that, is there any other business before the board today? Any announcements? Okay, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.